It'll just be a blank screen, but we'll get audio.
Okay. Let me know when you guys are ready because it's after. Already. Are you handing out gifts?
No, you want to make an introduction?
No. Maybe next time.
Next time. Maybe. We are ready.
You in there?
Yeah.
Are we ready?
We are ready.
Yeah, go ahead. Alright guys, we're gonna start it. Okay, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of African School Board of Education. Um, Tuesday, November eighteenth, seven PM. Roll call. Mrs. Ernest here. Mrs. Kelly here. Mr. Kennedy.
Present.
Mr. Leidy.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Stand for the pledge.
What do we do?
Of the United States of America and through the Republic where which is stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda is recognition of students and staff. Mr. Ernest.
Hey, we've got a few. Don't they all look nice tonight?
They do.
Really appreciate having you here. Sharing with us part of their story. Student council. Why don't you come on up? We're having tech- technical difficulties, so I'm telling you, you're not on camera tonight.
Oh, yeah.
So, that may be a disappointment, or it may be a relief.
Alright, well, I'm Lori Griffiths, and I am High School Student Council Advisor. We're a little shy on members because of the band and choir trip tonight. Um, but I do have some very key players with us tonight, and they're gonna tell you about what we have did this year. We did start- start off the school season with another, uh, successful haircut and hot dogs that we partner with National Honor Society. We provided, I believe it was over seventy free haircuts and school supplies, uh, to students in our district, so we're very proud of that. Go ahead.
We do the homecoming parade to pick off like homecoming and football. And we have a float for like anyone who doesn't have a float, or anyone, any club that didn't have a float, and then us. And we're in the front of the parade, and it's just a fun way to get kickoff.
I'm Lori. Really proud. Uh, but you're interested in it?
Um, I'm Kate Sadler, I'm the president. Uh, homecoming this year, we had over four hundred students, um, in the elementary, since it was turned up to nine. And we didn't go as difficult decorating, but it was definitely a lot easier to fill them, and it was a lot fun.
Um, I'm Kendall Walsh, I'm the sophomore representative, and, um, so on Halloween morning, we went to the doors and we passed out candy to the students. Just to start the day off as constant, and yeah, just greeting the students, passing their candy.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth, I'm a senior, and so during December, we're gonna look at NHS again to put together Christmas baskets for it. This year will be opening around seventeen pages.
I'm Lila Cabs, I am the public permissions officer. Um, at the end of the year, we do the second quarter reward, which is to send off to Christmas break. We pretty much planned the whole day out. Um, we have all the staff and students come down to the gym, and we do a bunch of games, um, dancing, a bunch of fun. We just have a bunch of fun, and then the corner on a good bill for Christmas break.
Um, and then in the spring, we'll do our Easter egg hunt, where we'll always go hide Easter egg threes from candy, and hope it's a good one. And then we'll have our grandparents breakfast towards the end of this school year to get all of our work and have a great school year.
Thanks for having us.
Well, we appreciate you coming tonight, and appreciate all the good things you do, just, you know, for both for the students, uh, the staff, and the community especially. I'm sure those are welcome activities that you do, but, uh, thank you, yeah, for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we have your book.
Uh, I'm Lawrence Slants, and this is my first year as the yearbook advisor. Uh, we just finished, uh, the fall, fall round, so we got everything taken for fall, working on those pages, and we're gonna start working on the winter once the winter sports start up. We'd have a lot more, but we have a lot of winter participants, more inspired, and so, like two seniors here, I'll let them introduce themselves, and how would, what they think about it, they might hate it, I don't know.
I'm Yavie Noah, I'm a senior. I think yearbook has been really fun since we were, um, we just like go around schools, take pictures, go to events and take pictures, like, uh, we do the basketball, we make the volleyball. Um, I've been doing a lot of other things with pictures, and like, it's, it was fun to pick out a theme to like capture this year. We went with your diaries, and that'll be fun.
I'm Hunter F, I'm a senior in the under yearbook. And this is like a first year, and there's something different, like, instead of just drawing up pages.
So how many students do you have on staff?
That we have, we have nineteen, and Hunter's our only returner, so she's our, her, she keeps me in line. She knows more than I do, so we try to, try to ask her if there might be any questions.
Sure, sure. And it's a, you know, it's a year-long process, I think.
Yes.
That takes time, but, you know, from everything I've seen in the past, you put out a really great product, if, after students are looking forward to this year's event.
Hopefully next year, Mr. Wokes is working, we can print it in school, we're trying to cut, cut out middleman, so.
Yeah.
Hope those materials and machines go, could, could use next year, so we're working on that as well.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
You also are our advisor for Quiz Bowl.
Yes, Quiz Bowl, we have, uh, four events, actually, we didn't, we couldn't get anybody here today, but, uh, Mr. Crowe also had a parent engagement, but we have four events this year for Quiz Bowl. Uh, the first one is in a couple weeks, uh, at LCC, and we holstered our own sometime in, in the spring, and then we have two with WBO, then we have a tournament we do in, uh, right state of the league, or something. So, we're first, technically, for both of us, first year, that's ahead of it, so we're looking forward to that, so we have two full teams for the first time, so full varsity and full JV, so we're pretty excited about that as well.
Good, well, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Boys' basketball, Coach White.
Alright, uh, Dre White, boys' basketball, uh, brought our four seniors with us tonight. Um, you know, I guess overview, we're looking at, looking ahead to our season. Uh, got our guys for the first, most of our guys back for the first time last night. Uh, so getting, getting rolling after, you know, the, the football team's success with, uh, led by these two to my right here, so, um, we patiently waited for those guys, but we're excited to get started as well. So, um, we opened up a week, a week from Friday already, at the Tip Off Classic with the Lyta. Uh, so we're looking at, I told these guys, we've got seven practices before, before we head over to the tip-off, so we got, we got a lot to get in, but we're excited about that. Twenty-nine guys, um, this year, we'll have our varsity team, we'll have our JV team, um, we'll have a reserve team that's a little bit deeper, uh, for us. Will be a mix of freshmen and sophomores. Uh, we are looking, of those twenty-nine, there's twenty-one, uh, freshmen and sophomores. So, uh, gives us a little bit of flexibility to move those guys around a little bit, but obviously with twenty-one underclassmen, I'll be leaning on these, these four quite a bit, uh, with a lot of experience. Um, great guys, I'll let them introduce themselves, and then I think they're gonna tell you one thing that they're looking forward to, uh, the most with our upcoming season.
Hey, I'm Logan Markley, and one thing I'm looking forward to is the first game on the new court.
Uh, Zach Cole, senior point guard, I'm looking forward to playing a lot in the tip-off first.
Dave Hoffman, senior, looking forward to being for WBO championship.
George Easter, and I'm looking forward to just having a competitive season, going out, having fun.
Good. Well, not only a new floor, you got a new roof, and you got new bleachers.
Thank you.
Totally revolved, but if, if it gets warm, we can't help you out there. We have to take care of that.
Can we, Coach, I'm most looking forward to these guys dressing up like this. On games, Fridays.
Well, I thought maybe we could, Coach.
Do we make this a thing, like? We dress up, we all dress up for league. We dress up for league games. Do you? But not, not like matching white shirts and blue ties, like, let's, we're on to something here.
Change the dress code. We'll approve it at the next board meeting. Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you. Good luck. Good luck.
And that's typical, and I didn't, didn't like, let y'all release to go, in light board, and we're all succeeding.
Thank you.
Why do they always leave?
Last exit. We've had some say, we have had some say. Alright. Okay, next on the agenda is board responses to previous communications, we have none. Next is hearing of the public, items on the agenda, we have none. So next up is items from board president, we'll start with administrator report, and we'll start with Mr. Clark. Sure. You're first on the, on the agenda, so. Do we wanna start?
Yeah, let's, let's go with Brian, because that way we'll have, have heard all the building reports, and Jeremy's like.
Perfect, okay, you're up, Brian.
Do it. I, I, I overlap anyway. We just accept that. Right there in that corner. He's fine, he'll be yours, and that's fine.
Give us a minute to get out of here.
Yep.
You weren't here, you were nervous.
Hey, where's yours? We ready to go? Alright, so we're gonna, obviously, uh, these November meetings over the years have kind of started with the, the, an overview of the report card. Um, again, keeping in mind that, um, progression and things that we're looking forward to. So, so initial reaction to the report card is that, you know, four-star rating out of five. Pretty happy with it, we satisfied, no, we're never satisfied. Um, as you can see in each of those areas, uh, we'll kind of go through, I'm not gonna pick one every area today. Uh, you'll see some things in there about achievement, but I really wanna highlight the areas, um, that we're, that we're most concerned about, which would be progress and graduation. So, again, overall, we came out, uh, as a four-star. First one is, is our performance index, I think this has been the same slide for the last however many years. Know it's kind of hard to see, uh, if you look over here, these are the test data numbers from, uh, from last year, so you'll see in another comparison, they are down a little bit in certain subject areas. Um, again, overall, the percentage of proficient students, the goal is eighty percent. You'll see a compared, you'll see a chart here where the algebra number's down, again, keeping in mind that we, a couple of years ago, started with our pre-algebra, so it was a smaller test group of just algebra students. We've now integrated those that took pre-algebra into that algebra, um, and the students actually performed pretty well overall. Government and history have been pretty, pretty solid, consistent throughout the years. In fact, I think history might, I don't know if they're a little bit higher, um, but they're pretty close. Biology dropped slightly, uh, ELA dropped slightly, and then this, this score, guys, I, as much as I would love to tell you that that's gonna stay there, it, it is likely not going to because of the changes that we made. So, that subgroup of students is the same group that we tested as algebra-only, um, last year, I guess, or two years ago now. So that number will, will be impacted with the integration of the pre-algebra, as those kids are now testing. Most of those kids are gonna take that geometry test now, if they're not taking it their freshman year, if they're on the pre-algebra track, they'll take it as juniors, uh, whether it's here with us or at the bottom. What I do like to see over here in these charts are, um, this is the comparison from twenty-twenty-one all the way up to twenty-five, um, and we continue to steadily climb that ladder. What stands out the most to me is these blue ones at the bottom, these would be our students that are either limited or basic. So you can see that those numbers have declined, um, throughout the last five years. Um, we still have a high number of students that are testing in that deficient area, um, we have increased the number of students that are testing in the two, actually, the three, uh, upper categories for those, those tested subjects. So, um, we made a heavy push on achievement about, about four years ago, um, and those results are showing in, in retrospect, that the scores that our kids are, are doing on those tests, are showing on those tests. So here's kind of a breakdown of the last five years, um, sorry for this in the middle here. Biology was down, that was, that's an eighty-nine point seven behind there from last year. But as you can see, I think, you know, we, we kind of held the course, especially, I think that the most noticeable thing with these are the math scores, um, have, have made some steady increase from five years ago, um, aside from that year. So, I'm pretty happy with that. As we kind of progress down, we've done this, and I didn't, I didn't do my typical Christmas tree color, red and green, uh, just to show you guys some basic comparisons to how our students, again, this is on the achievement end of things. So, when we look at just the league schools, teams that we play in sports every season, um, and we're kind of doing the competitive thing, our, our kids are performing well, um, in comparison to those schools. And again, I think I, I'm kind of reminding you, like, our kids at times are testing in certain subjects, for example, American history, um, we're one of the few schools in the area that offer that to our freshmen. Uh, most, most schools are still doing that with sophomores and testing government with their juniors, this is our sophomores. So, I, you know, again, I'm very pleased with how, um, our staff and our students have done in the realm as compared to other schools in the league. We go to the county schools, uh, very similar numbers, um, and a little skewed with some of the schools in the area, but, uh, again, overall, in that comparison, we fared very well. And then, put this up the last few years with our, our similar district comparisons, which again, if you kind of look at the bottom, um, our, our kids in comparison with achievement scores. So, we're talking those, those overall percentages that are at the top highlighted there, um, are, are outperforming most of those similar districts that we are compared to by the state. One thing I did wanna do this year, it's a little bit different, is, is comparison, the overall, uh, report card, and, um, there's a couple glaring things to us. I mean, you know, our overall score of four is pretty solid in comparison, um, I, our, uh, sorry, our achievement is, is getting solid. The areas that we are gonna get a little bit more into here are the progress and, and the graduation. I didn't get the, I didn't get that college career workhorse rating, so, on there, but, um, in comparison to others, our students are doing well, and our school's doing well on that aspect as well. Similar graphic with the, with the area schools, with the county schools, I'm sorry, um, again, it's in the, in the, uh, progress and the graduation, and then, um, obviously, the state comparison with the similar districts. The progress and the graduation of areas that we, um, in comparison are, are, are getting just destroyed in. So, um, as we look at this, we'll kind of jump into the progress piece, again, if I'm, if I'm, uh, overlapping with what Jeremy's gonna talk, Mr. Clark's gonna talk here, I apologize, but our, our two-star rating here, uh, is of concern. As we take a look at this, we, we've, I'm just kind of throwing out some of this data, I don't wanna inundate you with a lot of stuff, but these are things that we have to address. I have to do a better job of addressing this directly with our staff to show them this. I, I, I will say this, I think a lot of our focus has been on the achievement piece, um, and for some reason, that is, we are lacking in the growth measure, um, in certain areas of this. These are our algebra students, just kind of go back and just, again, kind of looking at the last couple of years since we made that change. Before that, we would stay solid in the yellow, we had a couple of years where we were doing pretty well, we went pre-algebra, that was the, I think that was the smaller testing group, this was the second year, so these pre-algebra kids tested, and I think that benefit is showing that they are showing growth, uh, in that aspect. This chart, kind of, these charts that you guys are gonna see here breaking down by the, by the subgroups of students. So, um, as it indicates at the bottom of the chart, these are what they, the, the state would identify as our, you know, our, our, our lowest expected based on their entering achievement numbers, their, their, uh, anticipated achieving scores or test scores. And you got low, mid, middle, mid-high, and highest, so you're, you're gonna see that graph in these different ones fluctuate as we go through this. These are our government ones, again, um, we were knocking it out of the park with government, we did have a change with, with, uh, staffing and moving some staff around when, when we had a teacher leave. Uh, I do think that that may have impacted testing a little bit, because we have a teacher that's, that taught American government for the first time last year. So hopefully, we're gonna get those things squared away, show improvement on that, on that end. Again, kind of looking at this, as you, as you're looking across the board, the achievement groups, which we talked about at the end, um, heavy in that middle group on kind of the negative side of the score with growth, um, not so much on the, on the higher end of things, and on lower end of things. American history, now, this is, this is the one that's a little bit perplexing to us, um, because for four years running, we've been in this yellow, um, we're showing pretty significant gaps in American history. Uh, we sat in on a meeting last year, trying to, trying to ask the question, it's like, how are we, how are we not showing that growth? I don't have a clear-cut answer, uh, Mr. Fay and I have talked about this pretty significantly. Um, I do think that one of the, one of the impacts, and I, and I need to do, um, my homework on this in terms of just confirming this, but I think the fact that when we moved American history into our freshman level, um, it took a dynamic in the, in the, in the, in the testing element for, uh, our students was negatively, negatively impacting this. In such that, um, I think other, so the way that these scores are calculated for history and government, to our understanding, is that is a, a, a predicted score based on kids that have tested in other subject areas. So it can be middle school tests, leading up to, it could be any high school test that they've taken. Um, and so what we've, what we've discussed is we think that maybe the fact that we test our freshmen in American history, um, before they have generated an algebra score, um, might be negatively impacting this in the sense that, since algebra tends to be one of the, the tougher subjects for students. Let's just say you have a student that's, that's a predicted seven-hundred kid on their test, they don't take the algebra test, and now all of a sudden, their American history score is predicted at seven-twenty or seven-twenty-five. If that student takes the algebra test and scores a seven-hundred, it might drop that history, at least we're thinking this, it might drop that history score down just a little bit. And I feel like a lot of our students are missing, we have a large pocket of students that are missing those scores, as you guys can see on the left, or I guess in this graphic here. Over the years, you're seeing it's a, a matter of six points, six points, you know, five, six, so we're talking probably a handful of, of questions. I don't, I don't know that that's the fact, um, but we do think that that might be one of the factors when we, when we did meet with, uh, the state representative, uh, that kind of discussed report cards up with us, they, they indicated that that could be a potential factor for the American history piece of it. Um, again, graphic showing, this is just where our, our subject of learners are in regards to that subject. Biology, uh, again, we've, we've been pretty solid with the growth in biology, um, obviously had an off year last year, um, not too overly concerned with that, even though we don't like to see those things, uh, trending backwards into the negative. Again, focusing on kind of this, which we'll get to in a second here. ELA is another one, we, we, we've really focused ELA, uh, kind of broke things down curriculum, couple, a couple of years ago, a few years back now, we, you know, gave staff some time to develop their curriculum, to, to kind of search through data. We're still not showing adequate growth in the ELA realm. Kind of creeped into the, the growth area there, but we've kind of fallen back a little bit, um, this past year in that, in that regard, and again, kind of heavy on this end. And then geometry, uh, again, had, had a solid year, a couple of years ago, good year this year, these were our, um, again, a smaller subgroup of students, it doesn't show it on there, I think there were forty, forty of those students that took that test, and you can see, now that one looks completely different than the other charts. Those students, uh, did show growth in geometry, I see increasing amount of growth, uh, based on last year's data. So, as we've kind of looked at this, I mean, the, one of the most noticeable things for us has been, like, our high, our, our expected five, like, five, that five and four, those mid-to-high subgroups, um, are, are showing the least amount of growth in a couple of different areas. This year was ELA, American history, biology, um, they did show the most growth in, in algebra one and American government, in terms of that highest performing group, that next tier group, that mid-to-high expected group, uh, their most growth was in math, which is a good sign, uh, their least amount of growth was in American history and American government. It is a little perplexing from year to year, because those kids, and that's why we think the math score has a factor in it, that those kids that will take American history that aren't showing growth, there was that stretch where those same, that same group of students would go from freshman to sophomore year, and they would go from being all the way in the yellow to being all the way in the blue and showing adequate growth in government. So, um, so we need to ask ourselves some questions, I mean, um, you know, one of the questions that we ask, as, I've just kind of talked about this, how, how are we continuing to improve achievement, but we seem to be regressing in growth? And we need to address that, and I need to address that with our staff, um, and figure out ways to, you know, to, to develop and continue to improve in that area for sure. You know, some other things that we've talked about, we've kind of talked internally about this, we've brought this idea up to teachers, um, just the idea of have our computers become too distracting. Almost the, are we, I think we presented this to the other teachers, it's almost like, hey, what, what do you guys think would happen if we went a week with no computers? Just went old-school, like, paper, pencil, taking notes, um, I, I'm not saying that's the answer, I'm not saying it doesn't, it may not have anything to do with any of this. I can tell you that some of the staff, uh, the response was, I think it was smarter people just talking, but they were intrigued by that idea a little bit, um, using computers more so as, uh, kind of secondary resources for the things that they wanna do in class as opposed to the primary. I, I can tell you, along those lines, James and I were talking today, just about, you know, are, are we getting enough reading with our kids in high school? Everything that we're doing right now is, the technology's at the fingertips, you know, we're, we're giving those study guides, but I don't know, um, you know, the note-taking and those things, kids are on the computers, I mean, I'm sure a lot of our kids are doing great with that, but I don't, I think a lot of our struggles, and I think James agrees with me, especially in the math end, a lot of our struggles, I think, are coming with our kids, and just interpreting the reading that goes along with those tests. And, you know, we've talked to staff, and we've talked to practice tests, we've talked, and we're gonna get into this with the best practice stuff, uh, but we need to take a good, hard look at, uh, maybe some of those instructional things that we're doing, um, um, or other factors that maybe we can do to, to try to, to try to improve in that area. We've talked about this, um, you know, should we look at creating honors tracks in other subjects? I know some of our staff have said, you know, if you give me the, that those two subgroups on the far right, if you give me the top ten or fifteen percent of those kids alone in some honors-level courses, we'll get them to grow. I think the challenge for them has been, let's just say it's a pocket of thirty students that are integrated over five or six periods, um, the differentiation piece for teaching, when you have that group of kids spread throughout five or six sections of courses, it is challenging. And, um, can it be done? Yes. Would, would something like an honors track assist with that, potentially? But in those discussions, and those are just discussions, I mean, you're, you're, you're talking about the ability grouping, you're talking about what is the, what are your other courses gonna look like when those students are, are kind of off and, and on that track? But we've had, we, we've had some of a conversation about it, you know, our eighth grade students, in, especially in like the English, you know, they're tracked in honors, they're taking the Spanish, they come to the high school, they take CP, English, but they're not, they're not grouped the same as they were when they were here. I don't know if that would have a factor or not, I think it's worthy of continuing that conversation. Um, I can tell you that our science department has been interested in that, specifically with, uh, biology. So I think that's something that we can, that we can look at, I think there's pros and cons to everything. I do think one of the, one of the things that we'd have to look at with that would be the scheduling element of it, um, and how that affects, you know, master scheduling, all those things, but, you know, if we really wanna do something, I think there's, there's possibilities to do those things. Uh, we did talk about the best, best practices, and we had this conversation in administration meeting, uh, earlier, um, you know, what are the best practices to address those deficient areas, and are, are we doing these consistently? And, um, um, we've had some other conversations about utilizing our walk at time, uh, right now, we, we say it's for intervention, but we're not doing anything test-specific for that. Is that something that we look into for, uh, for the improvement in those areas? And then, lastly, I kind of threw this in there, is IXL, we have IXL, um, it's not for, we don't have it for all of our students, we have it for, uh, kind of a small subgroup of our students, um, but it is a data source that can address kind of individual needs for students, and potentially be something that we can look into using to, to, to achieve some more growth. So, those are all. So those are all things that we've, we've looked at, we're going to continue to look at, but it is a little scary in the, in the element of the, of the progress component. Just kind of looking at it unofficially today, I'm worried that we're trending in the wrong direction in terms of getting to the red color, which is, is, is not anything that any of us want to see. These charts are what you guys have already seen in those bar graphs. I just kind of broke it down, which we don't have to go through all these, but it was essentially saying the same thing. You know, we had a sub portion of students, for example, in American history, 124 students tested, 86 of those students did not meet their expected growth and just kind of broke it down by the percentages there. So again, that would have been 65 of those students in that highest achieving group and 74 in that next highest achieving group are not showing growth. So figure it out. We have, we have lines and solutions to that issue. Did this for all, all the subject areas and it's something that we'll continue to share with our staff, look at those, look at those things. It breaks it down a little bit between male and female, but those are all areas that we, you know, again, it's data, it's data that we need to figure out how to use effectively to make ourselves better. In terms of the graduation component, we did, we did get a three, we were a three star on this one. Again, our graduation rate is, is from two core routes of classes, the class of 2023 and the class of 2024, so not even last year's graduating class. As you can see in the 24 class, we had nine non grads in the, in the class prior to, we had another nine, yep, okay. Yeah, not satisfied with that. I think myself starts there, would like to see that number. Wait, I'd like to see that number 100% like you guys would. This graph just kind of shows, I know Mr. Estes had asked in the, in the administrative meeting, kind of take a look at how those graduation numbers compare in, to discipline, specifically, I think he asked for expulsions. So kind of took that data, these are all the students that were showing negatively on that report card, with the exception of the ones in the green. Those were students that actually did graduate in the summer before the following year, so we should have received credit for them as four-year graduates. But as you kind of see, and I know it's hard to see with that, can't really move it, as I went down the list, we had some students, like for example, this student at the very top was a student that came into us, you can't see it on that graph, but it's a student that started with us on August 1st of 2021 and by February of that same year had been expelled and then eventually moved out of state. So we got stuck with that student when that student moved out of state and never enrolled, just kind of lost track and never got records requests, you know, and you know, there's really nothing that we could have done in that, in that instance. I guess I'm showing this, I mean, there's, there's some students in this pocket, in this two-year window, there's a handful of students that were in and out, you know, that, that two, three years. At the end of the day, I'm not, I'm not going to make excuses. I need to do a better job of trying to get these students to, to see it through at the end. There were some really frustrating ones on here, if you kind of look down, there's a handful of students, I, I think this, these two right here, they were on track to graduate. They may have, they may have had to take a summer's class or two, but they got to the point where when they turned 18 years old, they had the mindset, they were, they were out, I'm out when I turn 18. They literally had about less than a month left in their school and it has reached a point with me where there was a year, and I don't, it might've even been before this cohort of students, where I literally got down on a knee in the guidance office and told the student, like, this is your principal on a knee begging you, do not do this, like, you are going to make a mistake by walking out of here. That's not all of them. We've had a handful of those students that have turned 18, that were severely credit deficient. With the home education option for students, you know, when we, when students have gotten to that point, some of them have gone that route with home education. I don't know what the numbers are for last year's group, but it should, we should start seeing the increase of the number of dropouts for the GD. I can tell you that there were, there were a few in here that were young. I mean, there were a few in here that signed out post-COVID 15, 16 years old in that cohort of students that were a year behind academically and the, and the parents just came in and said, I'm signing them out. And that's, that's a bummer, you know, we don't want to see the kids do that. We've tried, I mean, we, we, some of these kids, we put them in the digital academy, some of these kids have gone to Apollo or other places, been a couple credits short. You know, we always tell kids, if you're within, if you're within a year away, we'll get you there, like, we can get you there with our credit recovery stuff, you just got to give us that opportunity. But we've been, we've really struggled to get those students back into us once they've gone out, reaching out to them, contacting the parents, they made their decision, get back here, let's sit down at the table and talk. So it has been a struggle and it's been frustrating because I, you know, I think, I just think that we, I in particular, need to do a better job of making sure that we're not, we're doing everything, which I, I do believe that we are, but just need to do better, everything we can do to get these kids graduated, especially ones that are really close. Okay, these statistics are just things that were from the state, I mean, nothing glaring, you guys are probably well aware of these numbers, this is just kind of the general enrollment from the data that they put out. The chronic absenteeism, I mean, we did, we, we do look at this, this is, so chronic absenteeism is defined as 10% or more of absences based on the hours of school. So you can kind of see these subgroups and how it's been broken down. This percentage is a little bit concerning, you know, that we've got that group of students that are excessively or chronically absent as they are. Attendance rate, still working on this too. I can speak just from experience and I don't know what, if this is the right answer. When our attendance policy used to be eight days, I feel like we had a higher attendance rate. It was not as convenient. At that time, we had four per semester, we kind of ran into some complaints about it's a burden for families that want to take a vacation for a semester, so we give them the five days. So, so we kind of went to the 10 days to, and then we kind of switched it to the entire year versus semesters. But I would be willing to look back and maybe increase that number a little bit or I guess decrease it, put it back at eight, because I think if we're going to give kids and families 10 days, a lot of them are going to take the 10 days. It's kind of defeating the purpose, we want them there at school. So if we, if we looked at that option, it would at least get us back into that 95 or 96% range where we need to be. And this last one is just a mobility, mobility statistic. So, so all those things are related to, to report card, they're related to achievement, they're related to growth, and we need to, to, to get back in there and, and look at those things and really start diving into how we can, how we can improve those areas of the efficient. Okay, I'll quickly go through this, this is some of the exciting stuff, at least, at least for our kids. So the CTE equipment grant, you guys are all aware of that, we've got until June 27th to, to expend those things. My goal is to have this stuff hopefully done by the end of this year, to not have to mess with it next year unless we have some dangling funds out there that we need to spend. But one of the, one of the focuses for this immediate round was two things. One of them was the Spirit Shops, we did the Innovation Lab, it sat pretty much empty last year, we ordered that equipment and Mr. Wolkerston has done a fantastic job of just taking this bull by the horns and running with it. So he's emailed me yesterday and said, we're almost ready, he thinks, to maybe start posting this where people can start doing some things through the Spirit Shop, albeit it's probably not a lot right now, most of it is 3D printing and laser engraving, but kind of show you where we're at with that. So, so you guys probably saw these chains when we went there. It was one of the, one of the big hits for, especially our younger kids, these turnover chains or hype chains, those, those kids seem to gobble those things up. So we had the idea, if we're going to do it for ours, can we, you know, can we do it for others? So we did make some things for rival schools and other schools as they came in and those things went well. But these are all done through our new 3D printers that are down there. Obviously, Mr. Wolkerston has done some other things, creative things with students, just some, some little gadget stuff for, for Spirit and holidays, the laser engraver. So he has a student, I will, I will give the shout out to this student, his name's Matthew Moreland, he's a senior, just bright. In fact, he's doing his internship right now through the CAT program down at Plastapack. They love him. I mean, he is, he is sharp. So he helped set up a lot of this stuff with 3D printing, with the laser engraving. He's going to go down and give Mr. Pritchard with his, with his engineering classes, he wants to start doing some 3D printing and stuff in those courses, he's going to go down and assist with that. So, but these are just some of the things, and one of the things that they've done with the laser engraver is just they've, they've made some coasters. I think, I think Mr. Wolkerston's getting ready to sell those, or at least put those out for, at ball games and for sale on the, on the, on the website when he gets that operation off and running. So those two things for sure, the laser engraver and the 3D printer have taken off. This is our esports lab, Mr. Kinder has taken over esports this year. We took, we took this equipment from Mr. Wolkerston's room upstairs where esports was, put it into this designated area in the lab. Mr. Kinder's off and running with that group of students. Last time I peeked my head in there and they had something after school, it appeared to be about 15 or 20 kids in there. So they're, they're getting after it a little bit. We're a little outdated in our technology there. I think there was some confusion that some of the, the CTE funds were for the technology, there was not, but I'm going to try to help those guys the best that we can, maybe, you know, spice that up a little bit for them as they continue to build, build the esports program back up. This is our laser printer, haven't done a whole lot on it, I can tell you, kind of bragging on Matt a little bit, when the guys from Perry Protech came in, Matt actually 3D printed his own form that would allow us to put, like, it would have different sizes, so you could put anything that'll fit in there and it'll laser print. So what Matt's, Matt's was, was golf balls and baseballs and softballs and he kind of developed this on his own. Perry Protech came in and looked at Mr. Wolkerston and was like, you might want to have a patent that because that's a, that's an awesome thing. So we're, we're just getting into learning a little bit more about what that can do. I think that sign, the hype chain sign printed on that, I mean, but pretty much anything, there are certain fabrics that won't, but anything that can fit inside of there. So for example, I, I told Mr. Pritchard, if, if his woodworking classes did a project where they made our school logo like that, if it was flat or whatever, they wanted to put that in there, they could put that in that printer and it could laser print those colors on that school logo. So this is another piece of equipment that I think can tie into a lot of things we're doing. Obviously the crickets, we haven't really fired those up yet, but for some of the ideas we've had in the Spirit Shop, the T-shirt printing and other kinds of printing. This CNC machine, I think Matthew's working on this one as we speak, this is not going to stay in the Innovation Lab because it's a dirty machine, it's probably going, not probably, it is going to end up down with Mr. Pritchard for his engineering classes and his, his woodworking classes. We do have our banner maker. I haven't put this out yet, guys, but I, I'm thinking when we get this going, I want to do some samples, but I, I would like to take this banner maker, we can do it for a lot of different things. The middle school has, Cam's been doing it for signage, all those things, screening. But I think this year, I, I would like to, to maybe do this as our senior gift, I, I, maybe I referenced this before, but when we had COVID, we got some funds, we used those funds to get banners printed for our seniors, we lined them up along Slavetown Road and I thought it was just a neat thing for people to see those pictures of our graduates as they drove by the school. So I'm looking at that, I don't think it's going to be a heavy cost to print those. I don't know if it's something sustainable that we want to do, we might put this out to the parents to see, you know, when we get that number on it, but, but, but that has the ability to do those kinds of things, it has the ability to do the banners that you guys see at all of our sporting events, screening on windows, screening on doors. So we're just, you know, just getting in. This was the, this was the industrial printer and copier that Mr. Salinas was referring to. We have used it, we've used it to print the front and back covers of the Paul Print. We've used it for a few other things as well, for cards and those kinds of things, but this thing will essentially do about anything that we can afford it to do. And when, when Lorenzo said, or Mr. Salinas talked about printing yearbooks, I mean, it, it has the ability to print those yearbooks in mass volumes if we can, if we can, if we can do that. One thing I'm worried about with that is the binding of those books for the high school. Something like the middle school yearbooks or even the elementary is probably very doable in this. The high school, we'll have to work, look, look a little bit more at in terms of we're going to be able to do that. Kind of moving out of the Innovation Lab into the CTE stuff, so we've got 10 of these small engines, so Mr. Pritchard's getting ready to fire this up with some pre-engineering and small engine repair classes. So we have 10 of those units for students to work on. We have five of these AC/DC electrical units that he's just started working with his pre-engineering class. These students can go through, at the end of this, they can take a couple tests to get credential, I think there's two separate three-point credentials that students can get. And again, this could be kids that are interested in engineering, this could be kids that are interested in home improvement, electricians, I mean, this is basically the basics of the electricity is what this, what these units are supposed to, supposed to be teaching our students. And again, we have, we have five of those available in Mr. Pritchard's classes. With that money, we bought six of these different modules for home improvement. Again, I think they're multipurpose, he can do some, some other things with his other classes, but he's, he's got a, I think I missed one in here. He's got the air conditioning unit, there's an electrician unit, we have a residential wiring one, a residential plumbing one, a drywall one. That one's funny, I did walk in there and saw some, some students hanging up drywall about as sideways as you could. So they're getting hands on, they're learning. I missed one of those other modules, but this is, this is another thing that we purchased. This is actually a, an industrial wiring, pretty much more sophisticated unit than the others that he's working on getting set up for students to be able to use down the road. So, so with that first phase of dollars, we've purchased things that now our students are working with, they're hands on, which was a huge, a huge goal of ours to be able to use those funds. Future CTE stuff, the next wave for us is to purchase Universal Robotics or Fannic Robot to go in, a second course to add into the 26, 27 school year. I will tell you that the Innovation Lab, all those things that we've done in there, when we talked with Apollo, they think that we have some equipment in there, they think there's some things that we're doing with Mr. Pritchard's classes that, that we're not utilizing the, the, the CTE capabilities that are there in terms of the programming and the funding. One of the things that we're looking at is maybe taking some of the things that Pat's doing and starting a construction pathway to maybe utilize some more CTE funds, incorporate that with what the middle school's doing and create those pathways too. So, so we do have some things in store that I think will open up those possibilities. So anyway, the Universal Robotics is coming. We're also looking at going a little bit more down the robotic line of things with our engineering. So I've talked to our, the rep that we bought some of the other equipment from in terms of using some of those XX funds for either something in introductory robotics or collaborative robotics. Both of these, kind of depending on where you are, I think the collaborative robotics is something that's being used at High Northern, I think the introductory robotics are things that are being used at Rhodes State College and other universities. So our greenhouse project, we, we've talked to the, we've talked to the folks about that. The biggest thing, the biggest hurdle on this is we thought about putting it over here outside of the Science Wing. In order for us to do that, we, the grant says we have to attach it to an existing structure. They allowed us to say that we're going to hoist it to the courtyard when it was a container farm, they're not going to have any problems, I don't believe, with the greenhouse going in the courtyard, but functionality wise, I think we still want to look at, can we figure out a way to, to attach that? So kind of looked at this earlier in the year, I just reached out to the greenhouse people a couple of weeks ago, just kind of giving them an update on things. Would like to make that happen if we can, if not, then we'll have to go back to Plan A and look at the courtyard option, but might need to get a little bit creative in that realm with how we would attach it to the current building in the Science Wing area. We did meet, I did meet with Rhodes State College earlier in the year about setting up pre-apprenticeship or apprenticeship program if we can, it's a pretty complex process for that, but utilizing them and, and trying to find some employers. I'm looking specifically with our health sciences here, our students that are doing the CAT program at the hospitals or in other healthcare realms, is there a way for us to set up some apprenticeship or pre-apprenticeship programs for those students? We, we're going to have, we have a We, we're gonna have, we have a pretty significant pocket of health science money left. It is kind of designated for the Z space technology, the computers. But I know Mr. Parker and Mr. Estes have seen those. We've kind of talked about the possibility of asking the grant folks, would we be permitted to get another anatomage table? If we felt that was best to have that available for our students? Because those things are multipurpose, they're not just for anatomy and physiology. They're math, all sciences. So, so we're looking at those options as well. And that's all I have. Went over Love and Beyond. Wish you guys all happy Thanksgiving and as always, good luck.
Thanks, Brian. So just one comment if I could. So first of all, I appreciate the highlight of, especially on the progress score and your level of concern on that. The only thing I would encourage, it's also due to you've done on and met with the staff and come up with some theories of things that might change that course. But the trouble with state testing being once a year is it's a very lagging indicator. So I'd encourage you to figure out if there's some way to do some kind of an implementation and test that result quickly. Whether that's, you know, you do a couple of weeks of a, of a class curriculum. One way, you know, without the computers versus with. Do you do it with, you know, third period uses the computers, fourth period doesn't? I mean, is there a way to start getting some actual data around that to decide whether or not any of those theories wash out? But appreciate the emphasis.
Hi, does anyone need a break? I was trying to think, should I stand on my head and present this? I don't think I can do that, you know, as they would do more exciting. All right. I, I can hook it into my computer if you put it in the TV. I'll do the hard part. Messing with your stuff, Jess, is that okay? The phone, do you want me to answer it? She's busy. She's listening to a very good presentation right now. Shaggy, we have to go to a different. Well, I think like we're probably on, like we're on HDMI one right now. How do we get to HDMI two? Wait a minute. I do it? There we go. All right, so basically what I, what I want to try to do is just give you a little background on how the reports are actually, how they're created, if that makes sense. If you're not in education, you kind of look at them and maybe you don't know the background. And I will tell you right now that I am certainly not the spokesman for the ODEW on, you know, how the report card, you know, I do the best I can by reading how to do it. And what I consider learning how to play, play the game. And it's, it's not a game, but it is because they're constantly changing the targets in that. So you just have to learn what the new formulations are. And I do think that they're trying to get better. So I don't think their intent is to mess with schools. But because they try to improve their system when they do it, then it impacts what we think, how it's gonna go. So then I just wanted to highlight obviously a positive, but a couple of things I wanted to point out. You'll notice if you look deeper into the report card, the district report card is very similar to the school report cards, but they're not identical. And the reason for that is everything that the state does when they calculate our score is based on other school districts in Ohio. So when you're looking at a school report card, for example, like if we're looking at Bath High School, they're also including every community school in the state of Ohio, every high school, community school. But when you're looking at the district report card, communities aren't a district. So then those numbers are a little bit different than they are in the school system. When you look at graduation rate, Bath Digital Academy is its own IRN. So you won't see the Digital Academy scores in the high school graduation rate, but you will see them in the district graduation rate, which is why if you look, it's like, why are these different? You know, that's why, because there's different variables depending for a district and a school. So, you know, first of all, overall as a district, you know, we get an achievement score. It kind of reminds me of the old AYP, annual yearly progress report. Every student that takes a test gets a point value for that test. And that point value is based upon how high they score. So as you can see from up here, so an advanced plus student is a student who takes a class a grade ahead of them. So those are our kids who are on written acceleration plans. So if I am a ninth grader taking biology, biology is technically a 10th grade's course. But if I take the biology class as a freshman and I get advanced, I actually get an advanced plus, so I get 1.3 points towards our achievement score. Excuse me. And then it goes down from there, limited, which is the lowest ranking, you get three tenths of a point. So what they do is they take every student in the district that took that test and they give them, assign them one of those point values. Ours comes out to 98.5. The denominator changes every year because what they do is they look at, how did the top 2% schools in Ohio do? So the very top 2%, what was the average of their performance index? And that's where we get our denominator. So the top 2% in Ohio, when they averaged it out, got 109.8 points using that. So we are 89.7. We actually, you can see how close we are to five stars as a district. It's gonna be an interesting thing. Good thing I did my yoga though. Okay. Oh, I forgot I did that. Go away. Okay, there we go. So as a district, our advanced student percentages have continually declined since 2021. So that's definitely a major, major positive. One of the things, another positive that, that I would just like to point out for our district is especially when you look at our math, but almost 60% of our, of our students who take the ELA tests are accomplished or advanced. Those are the highest ratings you can get. So proficient is passing. But if you look at math, 81.4% of the students in our district that took that math test are the top two highest rankings you can get. So they're not only passing the test, they're getting that, the two top highest realms. When you look at our, the lowest percent, the lowest category you can get, which is limited, 3.1% of ELA are limited and 2.3%. So only 2% of our population is scoring in the lowest range you can on a test. Now, that doesn't negate the fact that we gotta get those 3.1% and that 2.3% ELA. We need to focus on a plan that's gonna get them up. But I mean, for a district, those are pretty solid numbers to say, you know, you've got some districts where these limited numbers are 30, 40%. So I've been in some of them. Progress. So progress is determined in a district, for a district. What they will do is they will follow a cohort of kids for three years. In that cohort, you get a value-added score. 50% is the current year. Then the year before, that's value-added score is 25%. The year before that is 25% and that gives you your 100%. So the state tracks Jess, Jess's group, she's Cohort A. And when she's an eighth grader, they give her a prediction based on an algorithm that's gonna say, this is how Jessica should perform on the ELA, on the math and the science. So then she takes those tests. That, that score, right, is 25% is, I'm gonna confuse you. So I just want to stop. So that, that's a prediction. Then when she's a freshman, she's gonna take the American history test. They're gonna make a prediction based on that science, math, and ELA test, how she's gonna do on that history test. So she's gonna take that history test in American history as a freshman and that's gonna give her a value-added percentage. Then as a sophomore, they're gonna take how she did in the eighth grade, how she did in the ninth grade. They're gonna make a prediction of how she's gonna do in the Algebra I test and they're gonna make a prediction of how she should do on the ELA II test. And then, so she's gonna take them. So then they look at those three years. 50% is when she's a sophomore, 25% when she was a ninth grader, 25% when she was at eighth grader. And that gives you your, your value-added score. So that goes, they follow the same cohort of kids for three years. So that's how that progress, that's how we get that progress score. When we look as a district, you know, we met or exceeded growth in progress for fourth and sixth grade ELA, fourth, seventh, fourth grade math, seventh grade math and geometry, science, fifth grade, eighth grade, and biology. So our science tests district-wide, we're, we're meeting that value-added growth. And then social studies, we met it in American government. Our challenges are in, one of the, okay, so, and I've been in a school district where, where we had very low achievement. When we looked at our progress report, our progress report was very high. Our achievement report was very low. Bath is in that situation where they're the opposite. Our achievement is very high, which makes our progress more challenging to get up there because the students are already up here. So now it's like, how do you get them up here? So one way to do that, and Brian alluded to this, is a grade level analysis of your value-added reports. So those reports that he had that had the, like the five tiers and the blue bars that went up and they went down, is if, if I'm an eighth grade teacher and I, and I'm an ELA teacher and I look at my value-added report and I see my highest achieving students met their expected growth, my lowest achieving did not. Then a plan that I need to do is I need to sit down and look at, what interventions am I doing during eighth grade ELA? I need to do interventions that are gonna reach those low kids and get that growth. If it's the high kids, it's the same thing. How am I gonna enrich them? So that's how a teacher individually can improve their value-added scores and then collectively as a district, the progress would, would be higher. Does that make sense? And this was just my example here. When we've got this amount of, of students from here up that have all passed, you know, in order to reach that value added, it's like, these kids almost have to go here. Well, they're not gonna go there unless they're on an acceleration plan. But these kids have to go here, these kids have to go here, right, in theory. So it's not impossible to do, but it's just, that's the challenge. That's the challenge for Bath, I guess, as a district, is that progress. It's like, how do we look at that data and say, how are we reaching those different subgroups differently so that we can make the value-added score? Gap closing, we are a five. And that kind of factors in a lot of things, how a school district gets a gap closing score. So they look at, what are the performance expectations, especially with, they look at ELA, they look at math, graduation rate, and then support for English learners. Then they look at that, they set annual goals, progress. So basically, gap closing is like achievement, plus it's progress, plus it's other things. So gap closing is like a, a combination of ones, sections we've already looked at right now. And then you get points on that. So I think I have a slide that shows. Please tell me I have a slide that shows that. Oh, I do not have a slide that shows that for the district. So I don't have a slide to show that for the district, I apologize. So for ELA, they will set subgroup scores for the district. They'll set a target score. This is the percentage of kids who should pass the ELA test. And they'll have it for all students, white, non-Hispanic students, black students, Hispanic, any subgroup that you would have more than, than 20 or 15, more than 15, then they count as a subgroup for the district. So all of ours were met, even our students with disabilities. Every subgroup in the district for that performance, they met that, so we get points for that. And value added, you go back to that ELA and that math, the progress piece that where we, as a district, were not doing very well. We didn't get the points for that, but we got enough collective points. We met chronic absenteeism. So the, the state said, this is the percentage it needs to be. We met it, so we get points for that. So when they added up all of our points, we have to have greater than or equal to 60% and our, we were at 66.7%. They just add up our points divided by the total. Now, next year, something that should increase our gap closing is we're starting to serve gifted kids now this year. So currently, we get points for identifying gifted kids, but we've never got points for serving them. So now we will start getting on next year's report card. We will get points for serving them as well. Graduation, which Mr. Jesko already went through. I think one thing that is nice that the state does give us is they give us projections for all of these. So in the four-year for future for all students, you can see what the state expectation is. So in 2031, they expect school districts to have a 96.5% graduation rate. They have these numbers for chronic absenteeism. They have these numbers for the percent they expect to pass ELA. So in looking at future possible steps, what, what anyone can do is look at, okay, where are we at now? Are we gonna meet this currently, right now with our data? Will we meet it in 2027? Will we meet it in 2028? And once you get to your no, there's an action step right there. What are we gonna put in place to make sure we get, we hit that percentage, you know, in the future? Couple of things that, that graduation component is, is kind of tricky from the standpoint that by the time you get the report card, you can't really do anything for those kids anymore. You can do it for future kids, but you really can't help those kids because those kids have already been a five-year graduate. Like Mr. Jesko said, that, that's the 2023, 2024 graduates. So we, we can't go back now for them. But one of the things that, that we can do as a goal, and I feel like the high school already kind of has this in place, and I know I'm trying to support as well, is providing the supports for the at-risk students in grade nine, starting immediately in ninth grade. What are the kids that are not passing? All right, what can we do? What things can we put in place to help accommodate those kids, to get them on that four-year path to graduation? We won't see that, we won't see the fruit of that for four years. But that's one thing that, that for me, I know for me, with students that are, would be at risk, would be, how do we put things in place in ninth grade? So that way, by the time they get to 12th grade, they're on the track to graduate. Does that make sense? College career work, workforce and military readiness, as a district, we got three stars. So these come from, from a couple of measures. They look at every student that's enrolled in XYZ honors diploma. How many students got an honors diploma? How many students got dual, got enough credits, at least 12 hours in dual enrollment? ACT, how many students received an ACT remediation score? All right, those are all college and career-ready points that a district can get. Then they look at career workforce. So those pre-apprenticeships that Mr. Jesko was talking about, technical assessments. Those would be like students that are in a certain trade. Like they can take a certain number of assessments and get credentials for those. The OMJ readiness seal, which honestly is one of the things that, that I use a lot in the special ed department for kids that need an alternate pathway, is we get them that Ohio means job seal. Kendra and Matt are really good about working with the students on that. Is we get them that Ohio means job seal. Kendra and Matt are really good about working, um, with the students on that, getting that. And then military enlistment, um, is not recorded for our district. Um, AP exam, if you get a three or a higher.
I am a little bit perplexed by the AP thing.
Yeah.
Because I think that subgroup of students was the year that I came in and told the board that. Mr. Stato had nine students take the test and all nine students scored a three or higher. So I'm not sure if it has to be a subgroup of, a lot of the things that the state does, they won't do it if it's a subgroup of students that's like fewer than ten or fifteen. I don't know that.
I, I do think, I think that's something that's rectified. Now, I do think that there were some EMIS errors in the past. Because with a lot of this stuff, it all comes down to how is it reported? And if it's not reported correctly, then it doesn't matter that we did it. It doesn't show that we did it. Or if it's recorded wrong, then it's going to come out on that report card, whether it's right or wrong. And so that's how everything is reported through EMIS. And Lori Griffith does a phenomenal job of, um, of getting those things, but it really comes down to EMIS. I personally spoke to one of my special ed kids who graduated last year. The year before, so before I came, but I called them and asked how, what, what they were doing post-graduation. And they had been in the military for a year. And when I, I look at military, military enlistment, it's a zero. So it was, it must not have ever been recorded in EMIS. Because that, that perplexes me too, but I think again, it comes down to, is that information getting put into Dazzle so that it reports it to the state? Um, so you can see there, um, one of the things that now that's going to change for the high school. For special ed, I, we always had to do this. So it's called a post, post-follow-up. So we have to reach out to those students who graduated the prior year and ask them. Do you have a full-time job? Do you work at least this? Um, are you in a post-secondary training? Are you in post-secondary college? Are you in the military? You're at the mercy somewhat of, of them responding, okay? So if they don't respond, then you can't put anything. And, and I mean, I must say, I, I was pretty thankful I was able to get with most, I think, I think twelve out of the fourteen kids that had graduated before I came, I was able to make contact with. Now, one of them, I didn't have good answers. I still had to say they didn't do any of them. Um, but I was able to offer support if they needed it, you know, I knew where to go. But if they don't, now it's a requirement for every graduate. So now every graduate is going to have to be, have to be reported, what are you doing? And that's going to impact the report card as well because it's, the number is going to be much higher than it used to be.
Jeremy, I got a question.
Apps, please do.
ACT remediation score. Is that the ones that don't need remediation or need remediation?
They don't need it.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. They don't need the remediation.
That's what I thought.
Yep. And one thing that, that James had created, which I thought was brilliant, um, is a checklist for the seniors. Going off all of these different things is, does every senior at least have some, like, do they at least have one of these things? That could go count towards, again, it goes back to EMIS and then get puts in, it gets put into EMIS. Um, we were a three, um. We did get three stars for this. Again, this, I have this down here. Um, you can always tell. What, what, what percentage you need to be. I mean, they, they projected out like two thousand thirty-one. So there's, there's a good. Indication unless a new director of ODEW or new governor comes in and changes it. I mean, we do have a very good forecast for, for at least what our target is. And it, they all go up, by the way. All the targets go up every year. The last component is early literacy. Now this is the exact same score that's at the elementary. Um. Seventy-seven point five percent. So forty percent of our, of our stars come from how many third graders were proficient on that third grade test? That could be fall or spring, it doesn't matter. And that seventy-seven point five percent, and then it asks how many were promoted to fourth grade? So those are kids who maybe didn't pass the test, but they met a promotion score and we had a hundred percent there. And then the last piece, that ten point five percent comes from what's called improving K-three literacy. That's what this is, and I only did this to give you an example of what they do. So, let me come back over here. So in twenty-one, twenty-two. Kindergarteners take a fall test. And that fall test says you are on track for reading or you are not on track for meeting reading. It's one or the other. So of those students in kindergarten that then went to first grade, they took another fall assessment. And thirty-six point six percent of those kindergarteners that went to first grade to move to on track. So they once were lost, now they're found, right? Trying to see if you're still awake. Um. Then these kids. First grade fall assessment to second grade fall assessment, sixty-five point five percent of those students moved to on track. And then here. Second grade fall assessment to third grade fall assessment, only four percent moved on track. And then here, third grade, when they took that fall assessment and compared it to the fall state test or spring state test, forty-two percent moved on, on track. So they take these percentages and that's where ten and a half percent comes, that's where that forty-two percent. Now, Mr. Renner has been very clear about this and, and, and I, I definitely agree with him. So one way that a school could, could play with this number is you could wait a month. Because you have the first thirty days of school before you give that fall assessment. So technically the elementary could wait a whole month before they give that fall assessment. And the, at the end of the thirty days, the scores are going to be better than they were, but they do it at orientation. But his thinking behind that is, why are we waiting thirty days to intervene? Right? So yes, we might get better scores in thirty days to make this ten point five percent look better. But that's thirty days. We can't start title groups or we can't start doing interventions. So he goes. I want to do interventions day one. So it, it does make a lot of sense and they are doing that. They are doing interventions really day one. But we did get three stars, um, for that. So there's our overall district, three and a half stars. Um. Are there any questions? I feel like I went really, really fast. Yeah.
I, I have one.
Absolutely.
So if I understand the progress. So the way to improve that is to most probably bring up the people who are low performers. And accelerate the people who are high performers.
Correct. Now, some grade levels, surprisingly, it's those middle of the road kids. That, that showed the least amount of growth, um, on some grade levels, some subject levels. It, it truly is. It truly is a individual grade. Or, or subject conversation that has, now, the strategies are the same. The strategies that, you know, if, if I'm a third, if I'm a fourth grade teacher and my highest kids are not showing progress. And I'm a tenth grade ELA two teacher and my highest kids are not showing progress. The strategies that we need to employ, we have the same target, we got to reach our highest kids. But that seventh grade ELA teacher, they, they're middle of the road kids are the ones who aren't showing those growth. So. So that would be the hard part as far as like a district-wide progress plan. Because it truly depends on the grade level and the subject level. Cause it's not all the same, at least the ones I've looked at per grade level.
For, for the students at the high end, would you expect? The implementation of a, of a well thought out gifted enrichment program? To, to pull some of those kids up as well, to give, to give them additional challenges? And I mean, we talked about different things, whether it's independent study or, or other challenges that. Some of the challenge with the state's score card, grade card is. You know, I've, I've worked in, I went to a school system where, you know, gifted education, you can do a quarter credit type. Independent study to do more stuff. And, and you've got credit for that. The trouble with the test is it doesn't care that you're doing that.
Right.
But would you expect that to give you an input though that says, if, if this kid is doing independent study in ELA? Would they then score better and show more progress?
Right, right, absolutely. And I think really honestly, whole grade acceleration can support that as well. Um. Because some kids, they're just so far advanced, but then you have to take into account the social emotional age. You know, um, I just had that conversation with a kindergarten mom. Um, whose kid is, is, is gifted, we just identified her as gifted and like at a third grade reading level. And it's like. And I, do you want your kindergartner in a third grade reading classroom? Like, let's have that conversation. It's fine if you do, but let's, but she's like, mm, yeah, no. You know, and it's like, well, I don't blame you, you know, but, um, but I think that, I think there's lots of things that. I think a growth mindset is always the best mindset to have. And I think that, you know, it's always how can we do better? And, and for the highest kids, it is a challenge. It's a challenge in a classroom where, you know, you're, as a teacher, you know, you're, you teach curriculum. And a lot of times like you, you teach to that base, right? You have that lesson that's teaching to all of them. But then when you have your low kids, it's like, oh my gosh, the state test scores, you know, the report card. And then so you're like trying to rush to get those, those lower kids. And sometimes it's those higher kids that, that suffer from that just because. But definitely our, even our low kids in some grade levels, like if I were, this is hypothetical, sixth grade math. You need to focus, how can you do interventions because your lowest kids didn't grow? Yeah, thank you. A lot of report card talk tonight. And I will tell you the progress, that value added report. The new data just came out today. So if I were a teacher that got this report card or a principal that said, let's look at our value added data. We wouldn't have been able to look at last year's until today. So just wanted to throw that in there too. Oh, so you put in the new charts. Okay. Wow, you, that, that just came out today. That's fast. Yeah, but that's what's just, it's hard because Cam asked that. He said, so if I want to sit down with my teachers right now. Isn't this for the twenty-three, twenty-four? Like, yeah, that is. So now, now it's there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I really want to thank you. Thank our building administrators and Jeremy for, you know, all the hard work that went into these presentations and the things they're trying to do to make. To help our kids all move up to that next level, whether they're down here or up here. It's about, uh, serving each student individually. So, thanks.
Thank you.
You didn't have to call a teacher. Get everyone. Jeremy?
No.
I'm on the edge.
Wireless paper in society.
Right, right, right. Okay, next is student achievement liaison, Mrs. Kelly. Okay, so, uh, Mr. Renner set over a list of Wildcat Way students. It's a lengthy list, so I'll share it with you if you guys want through email. Um, in addition to that, he wanted to mention that he's excited to share that, uh, Kristen Holt and him have teamed up and scheduled three leaderships lunch sessions. With the high school varsity B group to meet with the elementary student leaders. Um, our fourth and fifth grade safety patrol members and our newscast team. And he's provided the dates. I'll share those with you as well on email. Um, and then each session will take place during a student's lunchtime and varsity B members will join our students to share about positive leadership and teamwork. Um, out of the middle school, Mr. Staley would like to, uh, share a few Wildcat Way winners as well. Um, and there's just a few, so I'll, I'll give their names. Blake Myras. Um, Ayla Solomon, Izzy Griffiths, Brooklyn Suarez, Gracie Shetfield and Caleb Blackston. Um, and that concludes the middle school. Uh, in the high school, Mr. Jesko, um, wanted to congratulate the following seniors who are nominated for this year's Governor Merit Scholarship. Brayden Bochnek, Lila Capps, Kayden Hall, Brody Hammond, Carly Kennedy and Richard Roke. Students in the top five percent of their graduating class may qualify for the Governor's Merit Scholarship. This scholarship awards five thousand per year for up to four years and guarantees undergraduate admission to the main campus. Of any Ohio public college or university or any participating private college and universities. The Bath High School Drama Club would like to invite everyone to this year's school play, Clue. The play will be directed by Callie Ann Bolin and co-directed by junior Adelaide Wolver. Performances will take place on Saturday, January tenth at seven PM, Sunday, January eleventh at two PM. And ticket information will be sent in the high school's December newsletter. The Bath Fellowship of Christian Athletes will host a community food drive on Sunday, December fourteenth. The location is still to be determined, but will likely be in the Lost Creek area. Families are welcome to stop by between two and four PM to pick up items and receive blessings from students and volunteers. And that concludes recognitions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is superintendent's report.
Okay, PI projects, uh, we're not buried by them like we have been in the past, at least at this point. We're looking at, uh, some of the concrete, uh, work that needs to be done around the elementary. I mean, we have it throughout the district, but we'll start first with the elementary, uh, since that's the most. We know that's not going to move or be torn down or be added to or anything. So we want to make sure we're keeping that part of our investment in good shape. We're also with, if we continue down this course with the new building being across the road, then we'll take a look, a hard look at our tennis courts. Uh, they're in pretty bad shape. If you get out there and walk on them, you'll see what I mean. Uh, so they definitely need to be addressed here, uh, very soon. We were out driving the campus one day and happened to be going behind the football stadium. And looking at some fencing work that needs to be done, realized that the third phase of the fencing around the football field was not done. So we're going to take a look at putting that on the list of PI projects for this year. Uh, and speaking of PI projects, I'd like to, I'll be sending out a notice. See, you're on Buildings and Grounds and who else is? Rick, okay. I'll send out an email and try to get a date set so we can sit down and have a conversation. Bring John in and talk about some things that need to be done. If any of the other, any others, say, PI projects. Or know of a project that we need to consider, please let one of the Buildings and Grounds, uh, people meet, uh, know. CAT team meeting is Monday, December first, six o'clock in the high school auditorium. Uh, we met for what, an hour and a half tonight before this meeting? That's why we were late getting down here. But one of the things that I think it's important for the community to know is this, you know, we're not just looking at new. We're looking at renovations or other things that we can do. The flyer that went out in the mail, uh, you know, it says, join us to discuss long-term solutions for our aging facilities. So that doesn't mean has to be new, could be remodeled. Uh, but we need input from the community. We need as many people as we can get to this December first meeting as, as we can possibly get. And again, that's at December first, six o'clock in the auditorium. So, uh, call your friends and tell them we'd like to see them. We'd like to see them there. Delays and cancellations, we've had three cancellations already and two delays. So, you know, uh, with the projection, at least one projection that I heard that it could be a hard winter. Uh, this, we might be doing. a hard winter, this, we might be doing some remote learning come next spring. But we'll keep our eye on the weather, do what's best for our kids and staff. That's all I have.
Okay, next is a business to the agenda action items. We have one, adoption of the agenda and action items, do I have a motion to approve?
Submoved.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy? Mr. White?
Yes.
Yes. Next is superintendent's consent.
Okay, item A is the recommendation for employment slash resignation. And under certificated staff, we have certificated federally funded substitute employment for 2025-26. We have certificated substitutes. We have certificated Springfield placements and student teachers for the 2025-26 school year. Classified staff, we have resignations, employment, substitute bus drivers, and outside employment.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Submoved.
Moved by Mrs. Kelly, seconded by Mr. Whitey. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Whitey?
Yes.
Mrs. Ernst?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, next is superintendent's report.
No, you're not getting that.
State changes, now it's only three reports.
Oh, there we go. And actually, you get a special treat tonight. You're getting, you're getting two, two reports. Hello. What time does the QP close, just for the record? Are they closed 9:00? 9:00? All right, so we've got to hustle. I need, I need to be there by 9:00. No, I was trying to put together a couple of things, actually I shared it with kind of ASBO, the group that, the group of treasures, just trying to reflect on, you know, right now, and Mr. White was kind of reflecting on it earlier, when, you know, there's four major pieces of legislation coming, and it seems like they're, they're at this rapid-fire pace of trying to get stuff done, but the pieces of legislation are like House Bill 920, that it's, they're all monumental pieces of legislation. And it, it feels like, when did, when did you say they might pass it? Tomorrow, like?
Yeah, the legislature is planning to adjourn for the rest of the year, so they are basically rushing things through committee today, so hopefully they can get them to the floor tomorrow, and then send them to the other chamber and have them to the governor. So, I, I can't, I can't say for sure it's not thoughtful and deliberate, but...
Well, and I, and I would, and I would say that some of those pieces, they do not know the ramifications of what's coming with half of the legislation. I mean, you think the report card stuff's complicated, I don't think they understand what's going to happen if they start shifting all the things that are shifting. So anyway, just a quick reflection on a couple of things, this part I'll go through pretty quick. But, you know, I was trying to go back in time, and I, these numbers are probably slightly off a little bit, but to reflect on, you know, going back to 1970, Mr. Essis is probably just starting his principalship about that time.
Not quite.
Close, very close. You know, the state of Ohio was chipping in 45% to, you know, to public education. You know, the corporations, I, again, this is roughly 30%, homeowners 25%. And I think when we're starting to look at this balance of how, over time, you know, what's happened and that makeup, and just, you know, the other part of it is, I think, you know, we've got, you know, 55 years' worth of some subtle changes, and then, you know, we're going to put four bills in place that's going to kind of train wreck some of this, but we didn't get there overnight. I'm shocked that we're going to try to fix it overnight, it, it just, some of it's a little disturbing. 76 is House Bill 920, basically was saying that we're going to, we're going to flatline your revenue. You pass a $2 million levy, we're going to say it's collecting $2 million, that's all you're getting is $2 million dollars, we're going to, we're going to flatline it. 20 mil floor was introduced in 1977, a lot of discussion on the 20 mil floor, then, you know, as valuations go up, those levies was kind of, those levies would get rolled back. But they got to a point where they said, basically, as valuations go up, you're collecting the same money, but, so they would kind of, they would roll it back till we hit this 20 mil floor, saying, well, there should be like a minimum of what you're putting towards education. You know, again, so, then what do schools do? They kind of react to some of these things. 1980s, this phantom revenue piece, because the phantom revenue was mentioned at the conference, and I thought this went away. Well, the phantom revenue's back. It's, it's back in a different form, because in the formula, property values would go up, you know, we would get 20 mils, if we're at the 20 mil floor, we'd get 20 mils. Well, the state and their for, and their side of the formula, they would deduct 23 mils. So we would gain 20 mils, but then we would lose 23 mils in the formula. And it was just this voodoo math. And part of that's coming back, because I think in state formula, they're going to tinker with it to a point where they're, how they, how they evaluate the valuation piece, again, it's just, it's still, there's still going to be complexity to it. You know, the Deroff case, you know, one of the things back on the Deroff case, again, go to the highlight area. How are we going to end the reliance on property taxes for school funding? That was a piece of Deroff, right? Well, over time, we've been shifting the burden to, shifting the burden to, burden to the homeowner, not doing what was really recommended back in the 90s. How are we ending the reliance on property taxes for, for school funding? Oh, and that was Nathan Deroff, that was the real Nathan Deroff that was in the case. Inventory tax, 2005, inventory tax is removed. Significant here, because Procter &amp; Gamble and Ford, what'd they have? Not only have inventory, but they had the personal property. Ford and Procter &amp; Gamble both would have been heavy hitters in supporting schools with that, that piece. They'd say, well, it's a bad tax, because if you have high inventories, maybe you're not selling as much, bad for business, let's get rid of it. Well, they get rid of it, but for here, that was $100 million evaluation that just got wiped off the books. So again, that $100 million, one-third of the valuation just got wiped off the books, what's that mean? Who's picking it up? So I'm going to shift this going right back to the homeowner then. So instead of business, they're getting, you know, business is good for business, could be, but it's also shifting stuff to some of the burden back to the homeowner. You know, the income tax. If we have a 3% income tax in Ohio, 2% income tax in Ohio, whatever it is, you know, they, they're on the path to get rid of all of it. But again, who's, who's going to pick up the bill if it's going to be less money, if the state's fund everything, including schools? That chip in, okay, we get a tax cut. Okay, so you've got a 2% state tax cut, great. Again, who are we shifting it to? In the end, we're probably going to shift it back to the homeowner. You know, the high constitution, we talked about, you know, what does it actually say on the vouchers? You know, that, that part of it, just got ruled unconstitutional. You know, so that is the actual language in the constitution, but again, we've probably got over a billion dollars shifting the vouchers. We talked a little bit about that, got an updated Capitol Conference on that. I think, reviewing the sessions, definitely, you know, so, you know, they obviously feel like the legislators don't really care about our input. You know, I think their concern is, if we got two to three years of appeals, you know, they've got, still got concerns that the legislators don't care about really what's going to happen to us. 2025, abatements, TIFs, enterprise zones, and, you know, to some level, I know you've, you've got to do some abatements. You know, you want the business here, I get that. But again, the big, the big picture of impact of that, does that mean, again, our, if we're picking up, who's picking up the bill if we're shifting some of that? Could be the homeowner. You know, the housing market, you know, you know, just the valuation bump, you know, again, without some limits on inflationary growth, again, you're putting more pressure on the local taxpayer. If you're not going to limit, and that, and to me, that was the easiest piece. If, if your home value went up 30%, maybe it's capped, maybe that growth is only 10%, maybe it's 5%, I don't know what it is. It could have been capped. To me, that's the solution. It's not 45 new bills that nobody knows what's in them, to be passed two days before Thanksgiving. It didn't have to be that complicated, but I don't think they won't listen to us. So again, the shift, as we get to this, and again, I think these numbers could be even a little bit different. You know, state of Ohio, now 37%. I'll say the corporation, instead of 30, they're 20. The homeowners, instead of 25%, way down to 43, and that number could very well be higher, you know, from where we started. So again, that's why I've got the title, kind of the beautiful mess we're in, you know, kind of dealing with the shift, and then, like I said, the homeowners do need some relief, but I'm not, I'm not sure their approach on this, this quick passage of bills that they don't even know what's in it. You know, again, is that answer trying to get some balance, balance back to where we were, you know? We getting balance from businesses, property owners in the state, are we getting that balance? And again, with maybe some smart, measured legislation? Okay. Okay, now I'll get you back to the real one. Let's see if I can get out of here.
You need a filler, you old?
Yeah, Mike tried to block it. He's trying to block my stuff. No, super quick, let's see, maybe. October 31, we'll kind of roll through here, kind of where we're at in the year, as we end of October 31, revenues 8.6 million, expenses 8 million, net gain of 575, ending balance of just over 8 million. Kind of detail, you see that kind of the breakdown where we're at, when you look at real estate, 3.7 million, personal property, 79,000, state aid, 2.8 million. Again, kind of the big three, salaries, 4 million, benefits, 1.4, purchase service, 1.9, to get to that total of 8 million. Yeah, again, the state, real estate and state, very, very similar at that, kind of this point in time. Again, the kind of the big three expenditures, the same. That cash, cash balance, the history there, on October 31, going back in time, again, with our capital improvement fund, we're at 15.5. You see the last, the two years prior, we're at 17, 23, we're at 16, 7, 22, 15.7. Again, some of the capital improvements that has, that have happened over the last 24 months, and then what we've put in the capital improvements fund, again, we're at 15.5 at this point in time. Cash graph, you can see the red kind of currently where we're at, as far as the, you know, we get the tax money in August, then we kind of bring it down. Cash investments, again, still a pretty healthy interest rate. With Star Ohio and SJS, we still have over 9 million in each, as far as dollars invested. Food service, we do have a little federal money coming in, 76,000, the local, 98,000. So 279,000 expenditures to date, I'm at a loss of 103, ending balance of 699, 320 in the food service program. Athletic fund, football, we're 57,000, I'm sure that's up. I didn't, I didn't compare the last three years, I should have pulled that. Other revenue, we're dating 1,000, total revenue, 139. Expenses, 73,000 for a gain of 65,000, and ending balance for the athletic fund at this point, 109,000. General fund expenditures to date, for the athletics, 173,000. Again, look at those bills, House Bill 186, House Bill 309, House Bill 335, House Bill 129, and again, 309 is, I just think it's just absolutely crazy that a budget commission can undo the vote of the people in any district. I just guess I'm still floored that that's even still in the conversation. That's all I've got.
It's a record.
He's a frequent flyer. Who knows?
I'm going to call it in. I'm calling in right now.
He's not.
He should have done that.
Tori Ashford, Joel.
Okay, good, another, good list of donations there, you know, again, we thank everybody for the support, you know, between the track, the basketball, there's a part of it there in that list, the wrestling track, the weight room, we've got basketball, we've got the student council, 2,500 for anonymous donors, the student tickets for the pom poms for football game, you know, I thought it was a great idea to support the pro ball players, you know, great ones, so, yeah, I appreciate that, 2,500 from that donor to buy the tickets, that's real exciting. So we've got basketball, we've got 500 for the volleyball team, 27, for PPS to, for second grade, PPI shirts, $7 by Tom Ollie, back legs. Again, another great list, athletes and students appreciate the donations.
Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second? Moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Whitey, any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Whitey?
Yes.
Mrs. Ernst?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Next, again, I covered most of it in my report, as far as the data reflected from our, during the date, October 31, 2013.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Submoved.
Moved by Mrs. Kelly, seconded by Mr. Whitey, any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Whitey?
Yes.
Mrs. Ernst?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Whitey?
Okay, next is items from the superintendent.
Okay, item A is the indoor track and field resolution. Indoor track is, field is not recognized by OHSAA, but we do have our coaches volunteer their services to help the students that wish to participate, and there's no cost to the basketball district. Item B is the amended master facility plan for, at CC expedited, expedited local partnership program, ACL program. This is the resolution to accept the first amended master facility plan from OHCC. C is first amended and restated project agreement. D is the organizational regular meeting date. The proposed date is January 26 for the organizational, and, pardon me, January.
12.
Okay, 2026. So one, the organizational meeting is at 6:30 on the 12th, then the regular meeting will be at our usual start time, is 7:00 on the 12th. Item E is the kindergarten screening dates have been set for May 26 and May 27. And item F is chaperones and volunteers and speakers for the 2025-26 school year.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Submoved.
Do I have a second? Moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Whitey, any discussion?
One comment? I'm sorry, go, Rick, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So, I had to ask Mike this question for, for this one, I've got the half man. Joel, you can answer it, or Phil, I, the scope of the project for B, is build one new middle school high school out there? Well, allowance to elevate, demolish the middle school high school, will this be, what if we decide to, to recover renovations instead? Is that going to, are we locked in?
No. I think, I think this is probably reflecting the updated enrollment, and then you kind of look at those state shares on the master, on the master plan, as far as that break on 29, and 71 on the master plan, with our current enrollment, kind of fit into that. And this, this number would, without, without any LFI's involved?
I just know this is part of that application that's going to get sent out, and I wanted to make sure. And I wanted to make sure that we would have the option to do.
Yeah, the renovation case, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the requirement to be part of this OFCC ELP plan is you have to keep them up to date on, on basically where budgets and intentions are. And, and the important word there is intentions. So basically, even if we entered this program up to this point, and my comment was going to be, just so I do not want to hear in the community that last night the board authorized we're building a new building for $55 million. This is simply to update the estimate, stay current with the OFCC number. So if our intention changed to do nothing or modify something within the realm of the OFCC ELP plan, as you say, remodel or something else, we would simply pass a new resolution that says, "This is our newest, latest, and greatest plan."
Okay, anything else? Roll call?
Mrs. Ernst?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Lighty?
Yes.
Okay, next is report from the administrators, your transportation report and food service report. We're attached to your agendas. Next is hearing of the public items not on the agenda, we have none. Next is items from individual board members. Anyone have anything? Next is executive session. Do we have anything to go into the executive session? Okay. All right. Next is adjournment. Our next regular board meeting is Tuesday, December 16th at 7:00 p.m. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Kelly, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Lighty?
Yes.
Mrs. Ernst?
Yes.
Six minutes to be there, Joel.
Joel has apparently not heard of Tori Dash.